Thank you, Kylie. We will gavel in this evening's meeting. Welcome, everybody. We'll call the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting into order. Remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or a motion and second for an action item. I'll begin this evening by asking each commissioner to please respond with a here when I call out your name. Commissioner Dome?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
And Commissioner Lysick?
Here.
Great, fantastic, all right. In that case, then, we will proceed by handing this over to our chief executive officer for our evening's reports. Tom?
President Sanders, commissioners, good afternoon evening. Loving the warm weather, so. Whatever order you put in for that, keep that going. All right. So, May twenty-fourth, we're gonna have our next talking water, our virtual forum. That'll be held at noon and it's on a topic that is important this time of year. Irrigation tips and backflow prevention. So, pre-registration is not required for this event and you can find the link there at our TVWD website. A update on Taylor's Ferry project. In the, if you might remember, in the fall of twenty twenty-one, the Taylor's Ferry Reservoirs and Seismic Completments Project was set up and to be delivered as a CMGC or alternative delivery project. And the board authorized us to use alternative delivery. At the time, when we put that out to bid, we did get a single proposal response from Emery and Sons in late twelve twenty-one. And they were awarded a contract as a CMGC. At the same time, we were pursuing a grant through FEMA and we learned in March of twenty twenty-two that we would be awarded this grant. As part of that, we learned that FEMA will not allow grant money to be used for alternative delivery or a CMGC type function. So it really put our, our grant funding at risk to use that delivery approach. So, as a result, we canceled the CMGC contract and we'll be rebidding that contract as a low bid as required by FEMA. And that ensures we receive the full grant. So, in this case, I didn't think any of us wanted to walk away from twelve million dollars of grant money over a delivery method. So we are quite comfortable proceeding in the fall of low bid.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
Can interrupt, I just wanna check, is everybody hearing Tom okay? Or is he sound like the Borg to me? Maybe it's just me.
A little tinny.
A little tinny, yeah, you sound a little bit like if, if I have to age myself and say, do you know who, what the Borg is?
Okay. I don't, I don't think like full Borg, but I.
Yeah, not, not full on locutus, but.
Right, I appreciate the reference.
Thank you.
Not sure how to fix that. Maybe I'll try to talk with a deeper voice.
This is Jim Dome, it's a great day, the captioning is working terrifically well, the sound's clear. Who could ask for anything more other than rain?
I thought it was an audio effect.
All right, well, we won't worry about it at all. And Tom, please keep going.
All right, thank you. And, yeah, if it gets annoying, well, I'll be off the mic here shortly and, and you'll get to hear somebody else's tinny voice. So. All right. So, at this point, unless there's other questions for me about the Taylor's Ferry contract, I don't really have much more. I did wanna, I failed to put it in here because we had a meeting this morning with our key customers. And just a quick update on that meeting. So this included all of our top twenty-five largest water users. Not, we didn't have great attendance, but decent attendance from the bigger ones that you could think of. And really good questions. It, no, no, nobody threw any rocks, how's that? We talked to them about the increases that we were facing. They understood. Anyways, I'll stop there. It was a good meeting, we got good feedback. And with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Joel Carey, our Water Resources Division Manager, to report on the department report this evening.
Good evening, commissioners, President Sanders. President Sanders, I hate to tell you, but I'm with Commissioner, Commissioner Lysick, I like the hot weather, so. This is, this is right up my alley, no complaints right now, so. If you could advance the slides to the starting slide, we'll get it kicked off.
Joel, you might wanna just take control.
Okay. I can do that too, give me one second. Okay, everybody see that now? Thumbs up, excellent. All right, so tonight's department report is about the lead and copper rule revisions, so we've got quite a few slides, but we'll get through them quickly tonight. So, really quick, just before I start, just wanna mention this is, this has been an ongoing project the district's been working on, we'll get into details in a minute. And just to orient you towards the slide deck, you'll see that this is a project team effort with our subject matter expert, communications and consulting teams from Bowden Caldwell and Sheep Scott. So some of the information and graphics you'll see were designed and developed by this, by this team along with TVWD's project team. So excited to share this with you tonight. So our agenda really fast, we're just gonna go through a quick bit of background. We'll talk about the inventory process, we'll talk about the communications and outreach strategy that we're deploying for this work, and then we'll talk about funding in our next steps. So, quick little bit of background around this too, and you'll see some of the imagery. This is actually one of our water quality inspectors, David Nakamura, out sampling. So, part of our outreach materials is seen sprinkled throughout this effort and kinda highlight the materials that we'll be pushing out here in the coming, in the coming weeks, so. So, a quick refresher about the lead and copper rule. As we call it, we love acronyms in this, in this part of the agency, so water quality acronyms, LCRR, Lead and Copper Rule revisions. That is the revisions published by the EPA in two thousand and nineteen. It's a update to the existing lead and copper rules. The most important point to remember for right now is that it's, it's an October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four compliance date for the first step in that role, that's what we'll be talking about largely tonight. And that first step is that it requires water systems to develop a lead service line inventory, or the LSL inventories, we call it. There's been a lot of national news stories about this over the last several years. This inventory again will be due to be, will be due to be completed, your first step of it, by that compliance deadline. There are a lot of other requirements in the LCRR, the lead service line inventory portion is the most pressing, it's the first one that has to be quote-unquote completed, or at least your initial completion by that compliance date. And it's not required to be submitted to the OHA. So just to be clear about this, when we talk about the work we'll be doing, but OHA could audit you and ask for your documentation, how you did it, all the steps, every, every, every part of that project they may wanna see at some point, so. This is why we're taking care, good documentation in the process. So, a recap of when we last came to the board about this item, it was July of two thousand and twenty-one. So I know this, not every board member was here at that time, but at least just to recap this, almost two years ago, that we came, came to the board to talk about what we were planning when the rule was still, still, still hadn't been fully finalized from the EPA. So, we've established, we had established a GIS-based process, a pilot approach, where we were doing some initial inventorying around meters, some opportunity projects we were looking at, about two thousand individual assessments that we looked at to try and understand how, how easy is it to do these types of assessments? To date, no lead has been observed during inspections by staff, that wasn't surprising to us. We'll talk about a little bit later, but largely, we don't, we are not at, at risk per se for lead service lines, like a lot of other agencies across the country. It's largely in West Coast, in a Pacific Northwest thing. So our stated goals moving forward, and I check mark by that because we've fully developed our service line inventory methodology, so we've completed that process. We've procured professional services for communications and technical support, as we mentioned almost two years ago, to help support and scaffold this. And the last thing is that we will actually be completing inventory with, with hopefully no unknowns by October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four compliance date. I know this is what we'll get to in a sec, but that really is one of those things that drives a lot of other possible, a lot of other potential outcomes of the rule once it takes effect in two thousand and twenty-four. So, pardon me, this, the slide number two got mislabeled here, this is actually our inventory and approach that we'll dive into here in a second. So what's the inventory methodology that TVWD developed? Well, we do have a portion of our system that's considered quote-unquote unknown under the rule. Why is that? Well, really, when you look at the rule, what you're trying to establish is known physical documentation that says, I know what this service line material is. So, we largely know most of our service lines are copper. Uh, largely, most, most of our service lines are copper, we may have some galvanized service lines from older services. But again, to, to date, no district staff have observed the lead, but we need to prove it. So we still, we still have quote-unquotes under the, or quote, under the rule unknowns that exist in our system. So in order to, to, to the methodology to develop, that we developed to get out of this, to work through the compliance process, was field verification of a statistically significant random sample set. What does that mean? Well, effectively, just we're looking at that unknown block, we're randomly picking ones from across our district, not biased data, and then we will do the physical evaluation on those randomly selected ones. If all the inspected service lines under that random selection are non-led, like we expect, therefore, using statistics, we can categorize the remaining quote unknowns as non-led. That's the methodology that we're deploying to effectively prove our system and approve, prove what we largely know, that there's not lead service lines that exist in our system. So what we do know right now is this inventory approach aligns with OHA guidance. OHA guidance was finally published in March of two thousand and twenty-three, just this year. It's near identical to OHA's final guidance. If there is any lead service line found, we do, we do have the option to consult with OHA. Because again, we're trying to use statistics to prove this theory, what we largely know, but there is still the possibility that, you know, there's always things out there, so it gives us the option to consult with OHA and figure out our next steps, which would largely be, which will likely be more evaluation around some of, around some of the reasons why we found a lead service line if it did exist, so. Just last little detail here, it's, it's what we call one-point inspection, so we'll be looking at both the public and the private side. So there's two sites, the service line and the methodology. The public side is what TVWD owns, the private side is beyond the meter, from the meter to the customer's house. We have to look at both of those under the rule. From a national perspective, just to be clear, that does make a lot of sense, because a lot of lead service lines go all the way from the main to the house. You know, for us though, again, we don't expect to see that, but that's why we have to do one-point inspection on either side. So here's an example, or the final example of our inventory selection process. So, this is a map of the district. If you can kinda orient yourself towards, towards the district, you can see some of the symbology on there. We'll talk about what the different colors mean here in a sec, but these are the randomly selected sites that we'll, we will be doing the physical evaluation on. So, hierarchy of the process, just a quick kinda the roll-through of how we did this. Some basic things about our GIS and our, and our, and our analytics to get to this point. You know, it may seem simple, but some of the things we look at in GIS, there's a lot of data, so it has to be owned by TVWD in terms of the asset. We're looking at active accounts, not older abandoned services. Crucially, service diameters only smaller than two inch are part of the inventory per OHA guidance. Because anything larger than that just doesn't exist as lead. You can't make lead service lines that large, they're just too, too, too squishy, too flexible effectively. Tax lot dates and older are nineteen eighty-five and older for this inventory process. Why is that? Well, lead was banned in nineteen eighty-five, so really what we're saying is that anything nineteen eighty-six and newer, or yeah, nineteen eighty-six and newer is not part of this process, because of that effective ban midway through nineteen eighty-five by the state of Oregon. And then crucially, we also went back and looked at system design standards, so we have those for parts of our system, back when there were two separate water districts, Metzger and Wolf Creek. We were able to use those dates to again, look, look back, or look forward and say, hey, we have design standards that said, these are the specs that required for anybody installing materials in our system, including TVWD or Wolf Creek or Metzger staff at the time. So, bundling all these things together in our inventory, what we came up with under the rule was that we had about twenty-six, a little over twenty-six thousand seven hundred customer service lines that meant the unknown under the LCRR. Just for reference, TVWD has a little over sixty thousand service connections, so it was a bit less than half. And again, I just, I stress this a lot, because, you know, we largely know what those materials are out there, but we gotta prove it. So that's why under the rule, we call these unknowns. So using our statistical methodology, when you look at the way that the ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent confidence curve would work in this, we have to select three hundred and seventy-eight sites, that's where the map on, that's where the map oriented tour, that's the three hundred and seventy-eight randomly selected sites out of that twenty, little over twenty-six thousand quote-unquote unknowns. And what you'll see there in the map is that the color differentiation, so green means right-of-entryway. And right-of-entry, it's in the right-of-entryway as far as the meter assessment, the GPS to each one of these sites, we looked at them. We know they're within the public right-of-way, the yellow represents sites that, that fall behind the public right-of-way, or at least a portion of it on private property, which requires us to get some degree of access, which I'll show here in a second. So, those sites that we mentioned, of those, there's about eighty-eight of these, the three hundred and seventy-eight. Those sites will require us to have some communication with the customer in terms of, of approved access, because they do, a portion of it does fall on the private property side. So we've tried to be really clear about this process, you know, making sure, because we are doing this type of work, because of the potential visibility of it, we just wanted to, to, to put those categories together and say, hey, if we're gonna be on your property beyond that line, we wanna make sure we have good, consistent communication with you for those, those eighty-eight sites out of three hundred and seventy-eight. So we will be communicating with those customers and asking for their permission to make sure we can access a portion of that, a portion of that private service line. So, a quick little schedule here. We're expecting our inventory to start in July this year, continue through the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. We do expect to get most of this done earlier than that, but again, that's the compliance date, we just wanna make sure we have enough time to, to completely do the project before the compliance period, which is why we've been working on this, going back to the other slides since two thousand and twenty-one, to make sure we knew what approach we were gonna take. So again, just a simplified version of a timeline right here to see where we're at and where we're going. Okay, so next step, this is more the communications, again, the, the title on the slide there should say communications, so section three here. So what are our goals? One of the major goals when we established this was making sure that we, we built upon the updated mission vision of values recently adopted. So that was a process we knew was happening while we were doing our project, we wanted to make sure that was acknowledged and codified in this work. We wanna make sure we improve upon the new TVWD branding that we've done over the last few years to make sure customers understand that and identify what we are. We wanna make sure we engage in a different way with customers beyond just the billing process. So that's one of the reasons why we, we did a little extra work around this, given, again, both the visibility of, of lead across the country right now and the fact that we're, we will be interacting with certain customers in a different manner. And it's an opportunity to educate the audience on our water system and how it works. You know, there's a lot of proactive efforts going into this, there's a lot of work that goes on in the system. Again, it's a great opportunity for us to talk about what TVWD does. So, just a few more things to touch on, this was a staff-led approach, we had multiple workshops to really develop the process, identify our stakeholders, what are those priorities, refine the messaging, and really kinda go through and talk about the, the strategies and those touchpoints with our customers. So collaborative effort from across the district, from multiple disciplines, field staff, customer service staff, our technical folks on the water quality side, operations folks, GIS folks, you name it. So, ultimately, out of this is our audience prioritization framework, so looking at kind of our core categories of the folks that we'll be engaging with. We've got inventory participants, the folks that we actually selected for the inventory process, we've got staff and you, the board, which is why we're here tonight, we've got individual or agencies we consider local partners, we've got our, and our, and our regulators in our industry. So trying to really be clear that each one of these has nuances to the way that we'd message and talk about the project. So just a basic kinda breakdown of the message framework, how this, how this overlays the whole thing. Again, kinda layers to the process, we have our primary messaging up top and then specific messaging below that that falls out, and, and again, how we effectively make sure that we communicate to the customers, and again, relying on the fact that it's our mission, vision and values that sort of provides this, this overarching theme for how we go about our work. So what are the toolkits we have? Well, what you'll probably be seeing at some point as our board members built within our toolkit here is we will be establishing a sub-page or a microsite on our webpage that has more details that will navigate folks towards what we're doing. That includes videos, PowerPoint templates tonight for outreach and communication, additional templates for FAQs. And again, going to the print side of things, we've got information like fact sheets, specially-designed fact sheets for inventory participants, door hangers, information cards in the field if people approach us and wonder what we're doing. You know, explaining why they can, they can take a card and go back or even towards our website, you know, hit a QR code, so they understand we're doing this to be proactive. We're making sure that we don't find any lead service lines in our system. So here's an example of the microsite, this is what it'll look like, it gets embedded within, within our primary site. It promotes a broader message about the, about what TVWD does, you know, and why we're doing this work. We have flexibility to use this new imagery, footage and graphics and other materials as well. And if we had to, we can adapt and change this, this subcomponent of our website if we needed to for other sub-projects related to this work. So here are examples of the fact sheets, these are really valuable sheets that we can have, trifles in the field to make sure people come up and wanna know what we're doing and why we're doing it. I should be specific too, we're looking at making sure this gets contracted out. These are the tools that will make sure our staff have and contractors have as well, doing this work, so they can fully understand and be oriented towards, going back to the website, towards information they might need. And also, as you see here on the right side, all the materials being provided in Spanish, that we've got dual language for anybody that may wanna see this, anybody in our community that makes sure that they understand why they're a participant, or just general, general information. So I'm gonna play this video really quick. Part of this work that we don't have quite finished tonight is we have a, a video that will actually go through the process of what an inventory looks like for a customer. So, doing that excavation around their meter, it's not a big excavation, but at least that way, folks get this information, because they will be, they will be targeting the mail, so that they know that they are an inventory participant. They can go to the website, they'll be able to understand exactly what it, what a site excavation around the meter looks like. It's not very invasive, but nonetheless, we will be there doing some work with my back truck, repairing the site, making sure it's cleaned up afterwards, all the above, like we would typically do, so. We just wanna show this video because it's, it highlights some of the excellent work that the team's been doing and really showcasing the value of TVWD. So there's no audio to it yet, but it looks fantastic. And these are TVWD's crews out doing mainline replacement recently and flushing. And water quality sampling in the field too. So when we get the final video that shows the inventory process, that'll be posted to our website. It's built from a lot of this materials, and we'll make sure to share it more broadly with the board. So, again, staff toolkits, the information that we have, communications guidance for us, talking points, FAQs. Again, just trying to be very aligned towards good communication for our, for our customers. So, a few more slides, one other thing we did with this project is we looked carefully at project funding opportunities. You know, there has been a lot of, a lot of recent money coming from Congress that's been passed down the states that we were, that we've been looking, looking at for the last couple of years to understand, could this help facilitate funding of the project? So, in, in summary, in a nutshell, OHA has yet to apply for what we call BIL, bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law funding for lead service line replacements or inventories. There's a lot more complication behind this, but I just wanted to make it clear that we looked at this extensively. Again, OHA hasn't applied for that yet, yet, and unfortunately, there's, there are some caveats related to this that only apply to disadvantaged communities, which TVWD is not considered that under that state guidance, so. You know, we, we exhaust this one extensively to look to see if we could support funding for our work. It just doesn't exist right now in terms of this, this avenue. So where are we at, closing comments? Our outreach and toolkit are intended to build, build trust with our community, with our customers, and just raise the awareness of TVWD overall. That was always one of the critical missions of this project. We need to do the service line inventory, the LCR is a big deal, a lot of, a lot more visibility is likely to happen with this project as we get closer to compliance for water utilities around our region. And it also sets the stage for future projects such as the water supply integration efforts. At our key customer engagement meeting this morning, we had one of our key customers ask about that very thing. What are you guys doing to bring the new system online and our, in the supply system? So, the WSI communications, again, is another big effort that will happen here in the near future with terms of strategy and communication. But this really does set the stage, kinda an approach and a toolkit and how you do it to really make sure people understand the, the work that we're doing. And again, I've said it several times, but it supports our mission, vision, values. So last, we didn't touch on it tonight, the lead and copper rule revisions encompass many other things, not just the service line inventory, that is the first initial thing that's a priority for us to complete. But the next steps that we work on, what we call our phase two projects, starting now and through the October deadline, is proactive implementation of several of these elements, including things like find and fix. I could spend a couple more slides talking about that one, that's really like sampling, we need to do your monitoring, if you find results that are elevated for lead. As the water supplier, we are now required to go basically find and fix, to some extent, we're supposed to look exhaustively to figure out where that potential high result was coming from, whether it's a, if it was a lead service line, if it was a customer's faucet, it's our job to kinda figure that out. There are limits to how far we need to go, but those are bigger, much bigger elements related to the LCRR. We will continue to do outreach support for this, for the LCR implementation, just again, because of the visibility. And then, oh wait, but there's still more, there's the forthcoming lead and copper rule improvement, so. The LCRIs, we're calling it now, that is still something we're tracking. We don't know a ton of details about it, but EPA has expressed that they wanna make sure that they have the LCRI in the federal register about the end of the compliance date for the LCRR roughly, so. We should get more results about that, hopefully by the end of this year and into two thousand and twenty-four, so. With that, that concludes kinda the overall lead service line inventory approach and project. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this process tonight, and just thanks for, thanks for walking through this with me. I know it's a lot of content in there, but at least we're excited that we made it to this stage in what is, has, has been a very important project for the district. No questions? Commissioner Lysick?
I, I just didn't wanna be the first one, that's all, I was, I, I thought I was seeding the stage. More of just a comment, I'm very appreciative of the effort to provide field staff with adequate outreach information. It's an excellent idea, which I think the water industry in general just kind of struggles with. And projects like this, where there's so much visibility, because you're gonna be outside of somebody's house in a neighborhood for an extended period of time, just a lot of opportunity for us as a district to engage with our customers in a way that we would not otherwise be able to. for an extended period of time, just a lot of opportunity for us as a district to engage with our customers in a way that we would not otherwise be able to. And I am excited to to see how that goes. I think it's even before W S I. I think that the A M I project is, you know, this on steroids, where every single customer has their meter touched at some point. So to be able to do kind of a smaller scale practice run like this, to then inform a project like that is really refreshing to see. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, those are all the fantastic points. Yeah, it just it hopefully provides the value and gets more engagement with our customers and really supports the efforts we want to show the community of being proactive and and trying to provide value for our customers. So totally agree. Thank you.
Not hearing any other questions. Thank you, Joel Carey, Water Resources Division Manager extraordinaire. Let's see now. That being our last report, we move on to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. And we'll begin this evening with Commissioner Don.
Oh, goodie. Short. I had tonight's meeting and I had the the budget meeting a week ago. That's it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioner Duggan.
I had the meeting on the twenty seventh of April with our our meeting with the city of Beaverton where Dr. Teodoro came and spoke and we discussed larger issues of regional partnership. On the third, I attended the Zoom Washington County Elected Town Hall where Commissioner Fisher attended in person. And we got to hear the budget priorities for Washington County Commissioners. On the ninth of May, I attended the agenda planning meeting that we have every month with with the C E O and Board President where we plan tonight's meeting. I attended the budget workshop last Tuesday and then tonight's meeting. And that's my May report.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher.
Evening, everyone. Well, my time this last over this last month, some of our last meetings started off very similar. I attended the joint T V W D Beaverton meeting with Dr. Teodora. Then Tom and Commissioner Sanders and I went down to Salem for our lobby trip. That was an interesting experience. It was very nice to be there for and to act as chauffeur for Commissioner Sanders. Since the chair surprised us in the committee saying, oh, no, you only get two minutes for your entire project. So I I deferred to his senior lobbying experience. And then on the ninth, I attended the budget workshop and the third, the Washington County Workshop. And then Monday, I had the great privilege of hearing from Dave Craska talk about the Willamette Water Supply System at the Washington County Public Affairs Forum. That was a real wonderful way to spend my lunch break. And then I'm here at tonight's meeting.
Barbulous. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lysick.
All of the meetings that I attended have been covered. So the the April twenty seventh joint meeting with Beaverton, which felt very positive. Hopefully we can continue the momentum from that into the next meeting with them. And then May ninth, the that was my toddler. So apologies. I one second. Second, Junie, thank you. The May ninth Budget Committee Workshop two and then tonight's meeting.
Fantastic, Commissioner and Father Lysick. And then for myself, on the twenty fourth, I met with Tom and C F M. We do this most every Monday. Just getting lobbying updates. You all heard about the Beaverton meeting. Many of you participated. Couple of side notes from that. Councilmember Tivnan has joined my LinkedIn profile. She asked to be connected to me through that. And then two days ago, I received an email asking to set up a meeting with Mayor Beatty. So I'll be meeting with Mayor Beatty later this spring slash early summer. So I think we're starting to see some fruition of that. Rather positive meeting that we had with the city of Beaverton. That was awesome. I don't want to under emphasize how positive it was between our organization and Beaverton. And then on the first again, met with Tom and C F M because as Commissioner Fisher said, he was very kind enough to to chauffeur. That meant we got to spend time together, which is always a pleasure for me because I love learning about Commissioner Fisher. And he is seventh generation Oregonian. Am I correct? Was it seventh? And his family were some of the original settlers of Oregon, Buell, Oregon, if I recall. So I just I'm astounded. I just think that's such cool stuff. So I learned those things when I get to hang out with Commissioner Fisher. And then there's some days practicing. I was able to get our talk down to one minute and fifty eight seconds out of a two minute offering. So I felt really good about that, making it just under the wire. But we had to wait around like an extra forty minutes to to even get a chance to to present on that Friday. The eighth, again, met with Tom, the ninth, Commissioner Duggan and I, the agenda setting. The ninth later, the Budget Committee, the fifteenth, just this last Monday, talked to C F M again. They were you're commenting a lot about the lack of Republicans at the in the in the city of Salem at the moment and what that could possibly mean. But then they sent out an update, I think today, saying that Oregon was financially in a very good position. So that might get through the missing members of our Legislative Assembly to suddenly reappear. We can only hope that that happens because we do have a big request sitting on somebody's desk right now. So it would be nice if that were addressed before the summer break hit. And then tonight's meeting. So that'll do it for me. I'm down to about half the number of meetings in a month now, which is my wife did happen to make note of. All right. So that being said, next item is topics to be raised by commissioners. And do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? I would like to take this moment to congratulate Commissioner Don and Commissioner Fisher on successfully being elected into their positions and also Commissioner Lysick for being, I don't know, half elected, double elected, quarter? I'm not sure which way to even go with that one. But Commissioner Lysick also elected into positions. Only Commissioner Duggan was safe this period. So I don't know, Commissioner Don, how many? How many elections have you successfully run now at T V W D? Do you have an idea, a rough count? Can't hear you.
Either either eight or nine.
Eight or nine. So eight or nine times six times four.
The first one was one of these two year things.
These two years.
Yeah.
So we'll go with like
Although it was different, the school board, when I was on the school board, the Secretary of State extended our terms by two years because the district got big enough to be part of the the mess that they do to punish Portland. And so they just extended our terms two years. So we could we could join the big boys.
All right. Well, congratulations to all my fellow board members. We're successful four for four this week in continuing our roles with the T V W D Board. It's always very healthy to have some continuity through each election. So very pleased to again serve with all of you. That said, then we'll move on to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda. Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to remind you, I thought possibly the board was going to consider.
Yes, thank you. And I even remembered it before the meeting started. Thank you, Tom. Before we go to public comment, one more topic to be raised by commissioners. And this was a request to have the board direct our staff to seek out an appropriate acknowledgement for the recent passing of our long term friend and Commissioner Dick Schmidt. I'd like to direct our board through an approval of all of us today to seek out an infrastructure item related to the Willamette Water Supply System that we could name and plaque in honor of Commissioner Schmidt. And I wanted to get everybody's, anybody, any comments on that? And if so, just have a vote to direct our staff to to search to provide us with a list of possible infrastructure items.
This is Jim Don, so moved.
This is Jim Duggan, second.
Great. Thank you. Sam, can you give us a roll call though on this, please?
Yes, I can, Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for the ham handedness of that. But what we're asking for, Tom, as you and I have talked, is a list of possible infrastructure, appropriate infrastructure items that we can honor Commissioner Schmidt's long term commitment to T V W D, especially in those years. As Commissioner Duggan and Don will testify, we're not easy years. You know, we're complaining about the budget, but boy, I don't think it compares nearly as challenging as some of those early decision years that you folks had to go through.
So we will do that. And as on another note, as we discussed, sometime later this summer, this isn't going to prevent us from moving forward with coming up a list with a list of sites for Commissioner Schmidt. But we also will probably bring some policy language forward for how we go about naming future sites. How we do that so that we don't ever get ourselves in any trouble down the road. So many entities have that. So what we'll bring a policy back as well sometime this summer. But for now, we're going to stay, we're going to get focused and come back with a list sites for Commissioner Schmidt.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for reminding me. I appreciate that. And I apologize for fumbling that a little bit. Okay, now moving on to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Okay, it looks like we do have one person. This would be Jesse and I apologize. Is it Dylan?
Yep, that's Dylan Silent H.
Okay, great. If I may, each person is limited to five minutes. If there's an extended unless an extension is granted by the board, should three or more people testify on the same topic topic, each person will be limited to three minutes. So if you would like, we can begin your presentation now.
Thank you, President Sanders and Commissioners. I appreciate your time. I was working with a couple of people at Toowleton Valley Water District. I was a participant on the rate advisory committee, and I believe this is the space that I should be giving comments, but I I hope this is the right time.
President Sanders, this is later in the agenda. We have an agenda item for the rack recommendation. And so this would be for public comment for items not on the agenda.
I understand. So we're actually going to have you come back in a little bit. I believe Paul, are you leading that rack discussion?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, so when we have Paul lead his discussion, then Jesse, we'll have you come back then and do your public comment then, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes. Thank you very much, President Sanders.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you being here this evening.
You muted yourself, Tom. Commissioner Sanders.
Of all the things to do, moving on to item one, our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for separate for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, as you can see on the slide, we're here to approve the April nineteenth, twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes. We are also will be considering a resolution to endorse the annexation to the T V W D District, eleven tax lots and adjacent rights of way located on northeast Shaft Street and northeast Publos Street. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And then third item is to approve our chief executive officers travel to attend and speak at a conference in Columbia in June of twenty twenty three. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Don, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Fisher, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. We have, can I please have our district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I can. And I will apologize for my typo on item C. He is not going to the Columbia store. He is going to Columbia.
I knew where it was. I guess I didn't notice the U instead of the O. I did pronounce it right, though.
You know, I figured I could say something. Okay, Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, the motion passes. And once again, just like to thank Commissioner Don in helping us understand a way around allowing our C E O to travel to present at the the conference in Columbia. Once again, the wisdom of Jim Don never fails to to impress all. Made it easy much easier than than trying to work through the the minutia and the details that needed to be addressed if we'd gone the other direction. So I'm sure on behalf of Tom, we wanted to thank Commissioner Don for that once again. Yeah, so item number two is our business agenda, and that is our rate advisory committee recommendations. And this will be our staff report from Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening, President Sanders Commissioners. Really excited to present tonight on our findings from the rate advisory committee. We're joined by at least two members of the committee itself. We heard from Jesse Benton. She's going to be doing part of the presentation. Also, members of the consulting team that helped us put this together. So it's an exciting time. You might remember that this was the continuation of our rack efforts going back to the twenty sixteen seventeen rate advisory committee. And this is kind of rate advisory committee two point oh. Want to take just a moment to set the stage for the rate advisory committee and discuss some of the history and give you an overview of what the twenty twenty two, twenty three rack did, hit some of the meeting highlights. Hit some of the meeting highlights along the way, and then we can turn it over to Jesse and uh, let Jesse present uh, the rate advice recommendations and advice, and then I'll come back and talk about the implementation for the customer assistance program. So that's the process that we have to uh, this evening, and Jesse, I'll kind of bring you in when we get to that point, if that's okay. So setting the stage, uh, let's start with our, our new vision statement, which is our water sustains thriving communities every day for everyone. And part of that, living that uh, vision, is having the great advisory help us deal with affordability for some of our most vulnerable customers. So we started with that in mind. And the district's water rates have evolved over time. Uh, some of our commissioners will remember back uh, when we first adopted an excess use rate design, which is a rate design uh, where each individual customer, based on their use of the system, establishes their own uh, water rate by having a two-block tier structure that's based on the amount of water that you use. Um, and that uh, is a uh, an interesting rate design, maybe not all that common, but it's a way that each customer, by expressing their use of the water system, essentially creates a cost-to-service-based rate for themselves. But at that time, uh, that excess use rate structure in the nineties had a very high threshold before you entered into the conservation messaging part. Two thousand four, we actually reduced the amount of water that you were allowed to have from twenty-five CCF per month down to fourteen CCF per month, which tied to the district's uh, peak season demands and enhanced conservation message. In two thousand twelve, in anticipation of the Willamette Water Supply Program, we actually moved some of our public fire protection costs out of the volume charge and put it in the fixed charge. The purpose of that was to make the revenues more stable over time and provide a financial platform for the district to grow its revenue and to fund uh, this large um, this large infrastructure investment. And then twenty sixteen, we, twenty sixteen seventeen, we convened a rate advisory committee. Again, in anticipation of large rate increases to fund our investment in the water supply program, we uh, looked at how to deal with affordability. There were several policy questions that uh, the rate advisory committee focused on, but the, the very important ones were uh, related to affordability. And then uh, we convened this rate advisory committee uh, to give a recommendation on a customer assistance program for the board's consideration, and that's what we will do tonight. Uh, the type of assistance programs that are used by some of our peer utilities are highlighted here, and we walked the rate advisory committee through these various programs. Uh, we can have uh, bill discounts uh, that reduce the bill by a set percentage or a set dollar amount. Different features of the programs have different benefits. The percentage amount uh, is the one that uh, you'll hear more about tonight because it scales based on household sizes. Whereas the fixed dollar amount, it's a fixed amount regardless. Uh, flexible terms, allowing people to repay their bills over time. We've been working on that. Uh, rate structures, uh, we can uh, have different structures. We can introduce a lifeline rate. Uh, there are pluses and minuses of all these items, including water efficiency, having a conservation program that is aimed and, and tailored to help those customers most at need. Our temporary assistance program that we have, uh, bill forgiveness or other help in emergencies, that is what we have with our current customer emergency assistance program. So that is in place right now. In the twenty sixteen seventeen RAC effort, um, the affordability recommendations they came up with was one pursued monthly billing. That was predicated on completing our new customer information system, which you will remember went live in July of last uh, last year and is in the normalization. Well, I'm in the fiscal year business here, but July of this fiscal year, July of twenty-two, uh, and that is um, uh, that um, uh, customer information system is in its normalization stage. We go forward. The other is levelized billing, which would allow customers to, kind of what you have with PGE or Northwest Natural Gas, have a bill that is leveled over time and adjust um, uh, gradually. This would take the season, seasonality out of uh, the customer bill. Now, some of the RAC members from twenty sixteen seventeen were concerned about the conservation message that having a levelized bill would have, but nevertheless, they did recognize, uh, recommend that we go forward with that. Temporary assistance, emergency assistance program, they recommended that we continue to uh, to do that, and the customer emergency assistance program has been in place. And in fact, it's actually been quite beneficial. As we hit the COVID era, we had a mechanism to provide assistance to our customers through that emergency assistance program. Penalty forgiveness is another recommendation with the RAC. Uh, on low-income rate, they actually didn't make a specific recommendation. You might remember that they recommended the board consider this further and that the board and staff work uh, to come up with the specific details. Uh, but the RAC itself at that time, I had kind of a, two different views of that, whether or not it was in the district's interest or the different dis, districts role. Then we convened this current RAC, the twenty-two, twenty-three RAC. Uh, and we were after, just like we were in the twenty sixteen seventeen RAC, to have a very diverse group of individuals with diverse background uh, representing various customer classes. And so we spent a lot of time, you'll remember last summer, as we went through the process of sizing the RAC and uh, recruiting the members of the RAC. Presented here on the slide are the, the uh, RAC members. Uh, we had a couple that transitioned off the RAC and one that transitioned on, but essentially uh, this was the rate advisory committee. Uh, for those commissioners that participated, uh, we had obviously our two RAC liaison members, but we also had other commissioners. Uh, it was, it was exciting to work with this rate advisor committee and see how they came together as, as a committee to make these common recommendations and, and the way that they worked with each other and developed um, really greater information, just the interaction amongst the team and the consultants. Uh, so we gave the RAC uh, to, we being the, the board of commissioners through the adoption of the charter, give the RAC two assignments. The first was on the affordability issue, and that was, how do we help our most vulnerable customers as TVWD's water rates continue to increase in order to fund the Willamette Water Supply Program? So we little bit of feedback there. Uh, so that was the first issue that was. The second issue was to look further at the rate structure to see if we should uh, get a greater percentage of our revenue from fixed charges to reduce the volatility, kind of looking back to what we did to twenty-twelve and seeing if we should do that yet again. I'll give you a quick overview uh, on the uh, rate advisory committee itself. Uh, we had a series of meetings starting in the fall, October of, of twenty twenty-two, uh, and that was our kickoff meeting. Uh, and then we step here and I'll talk about the meeting highlights as, as we go forward. We were comforted to have two board members as our RAC liaisons, uh, Commissioner uh, Jim Duggan and Commissioner Paul Fisher. But we also had Commissioner Don, who helped and participated throughout, as well as other commissioners that attended various meetings with rate advisory committee, and I'm sure you found it as interesting and rewarding as, as I did. So the key considerations for uh, the uh, customer assistance program. Uh, first of all, funding qualifications and participation. So we need to consider how we would pay for these programs. Uh, the level of the assistance and how much that would affect other customers and, and the impact it would have on other customers. The qualifications, who would be qualified? Uh, would it be low-income customers? Would it be customers who maybe are not low-income, but maybe they are senior citizens? The great advisor committee grappled those things and, and made a recommendation accordingly. And uh, participation levels, one of the things that um, we're concerned about, and you heard Dr. Teodoro talk about this, uh, the meeting that we had with Beaverton, is uh, the burden that we put on customers who are seeking assistance, and how can we lower that burden and increase the participation rate? Quickly, some uh, meeting highlights. Um, meeting one, the assistance program. Uh, we covered what TVWD currently does with our customer emergency assistance programs. And uh, we, and our consultants talked about what other um, types of affordability programs are used uh, by other communities. Uh, we give the great advisory committee to a broad overview of TVWD's current situations. They would have the broader context, which consider the uh, assistance program. Um, on meeting number two, uh, what does it mean? What does it mean? Um, the assistance program considerations. So we broke it down into steps, and this was with our consultants answering several questions. The first one was, uh, what metric do we want to use to manage uh, who gets assistance? Uh, the how much assistance uh, would somebody get? So for example, uh, you'll hear more about this, but you might remember talking about uh, hours of minimum wage or the AR twenty analysis. Qualifications, what is the demographic group that we want to support? Uh, the maximum number of people, maximum number of customers that would be a potential to qualify. So we looked at what it would take to qualify that to um, to be part of the RAC, uh, to be part of the customer assistance program. Participation, uh, again, how many customers would participate in the funding? Where would we get the finances to fund the uh, needs the rate advisory committee? So Dr. Teodoro did a AR twenty analysis for TVWD, and essentially what we learned from that is compared to many utilities, we're in pretty good shape. What that means is although we have low-income customers, and we have customers that struggle to pay their bill, we have a lot of customers that have the financial capacity to pay their water bills. And as we've gone through our, uh, you'll hear more, another agenda item, we talked about our, our bond issue. One of the things we learned from the rating agency is that TVWD's relative influence provides its greater flexibility to do things like a rate uh, customer assistance program that'll help customers. But on the, if you look at the um, AR twenty analysis, essentially it tells us that a family of four at the twentieth percentile, income percentile, meaning that they are in the lower fifth income distribution, uh, they would have to spend about five point eight percent of their discretionary income to pay their water bill. And uh, what, what that means is for TVWD, uh, first of all, uh, that twentieth percentile is uh, uh, to have a five point eight percent is actually, is low compared to what many other utilities face. Um, and so we have a relative few number of customers that have a significant need. But not only they have to pay their water bill, they have to pay their sewer bill, and so we combine the two of those together, comes about ten percent. But to put it a little bit less abstract and put it into something a little bit more concrete, the other analysis we looked at was hours at the minimum wage. So that is, how many hours would somebody need to work at minimum wage to uh, pay their uh, their water sewer bill? If we look at that for a typical customer with uh, with three-person household, our consultants estimate that they'd use about six hundred cubic feet of water per month. Uh, they'd have to work about four point one hours, assuming the minimum wage in Oregon, and for this part of Oregon, it's at fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents. They'd have to work about fourteen, four point one hours per month to pay for their, their water bill. Uh, when we throw in the wastewater bill, about seven point nine. Uh, and for a household of five with that same minimum wage, it's about five hours, nine point one hours. So we provided that information to the rate advisory committee for, for more background on, on our customers and struggles they might face. A meeting three, we had a roundtable discussion, and we used some online polling to get information from, from the RAC members. Um, so who should qualify for the assistance? Uh, who should uh, how should we apply the assistance? And how should the cost of the assistance program be recovered from customers? The options that we had for qualification, as I mentioned before, low-income elderly, disabled veterans or others, and the rate advisory committees, you'll hear more, focused on low-income customers. So if you are elder and low-income, you'll be covered. But if you aren't low-income and you fit one of these other categories, you wouldn't necessarily be eligible for assistance. Uh, how should the assistance be applied? A fixed percentage of the bill was selected, and I think a lot of the discussion there was around the concept of larger families or people that are in homes that are, have uh, less water efficiency devices. So you may be renting a home, you may be low-income, you may have a multi-generational family, or maybe the landlord hasn't upgraded your water, your plumbing. Uh, greater assistance to those customers would apply because it'd be a percentage of their, of their bill. And um, we also asked, how should uh, the cost of the program be recovered? Um, it could be recovered by one particular customer class, it could be recovered by all customer classes, and the recommendation of the rate advisory committee was to recover from all customer classes uh, from both the fixed and the volume charge proportion, essentially treat it like just one of TVWD's other revenue requirements. On meeting four, uh, we started building on the customer assistance program feedback from the RAC through that online polling. Um, and uh, I won't go through all these details, but I mean, essentially, we wanted to identify who is the focus of the assistance, uh, how much relief should they, should we be targeting, and how to recover the cost. And so we went through that process with the rate advisory committee and got feedback directly from them. With that, we were able to pull together, our consultants were able to pull together a few concepts that we whoop, something just disappeared on me, a few concepts that um, uh, we were able to present uh, to the RAC. So we gave them three concepts to choose from and then had a discussion of the differences among those concepts uh, for their uh, deliberation. Uh, some of the uh, uh, some of the criteria that we used simply were not relevant. They were all the same, so we kind of narrowed that decision space and allowed them to focus on the three things that really mattered. The type of relief, um, how we deal with large households, that was important to the rate advisory committee. They wanted to make sure that there was a way of dealing with those larger household and uh, what determines the discount itself. And the discussion was focused on those elements. Meeting five and six, uh, we talked about the uh, customer assistance program overview, that these options, gave it a little bit more information on that to the customers, uh, essentially came up with um, who could qualify, modeled that. And you'll see on the right-hand side here, the program estimates, that's actually where we were able to identify about nine thousand customers would be um, would, would probably qualify, assuming that we adopted the low-income home energy assistance program, the LIHEAP program standard of sixty percent a median household income for Oregon. We estimate that we have about nine thousand customers in the district that meet that criteria. If we had a thirty percent participation rate, which is on the high side, that would give us about three thousand customers that would participate if they were to receive a twenty percent discount, and we estimate that would be about sixteen dollars uh, per customer per month. Uh, and then uh, that, do the math, that comes out to about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. We took that, added to it some additional money to establish the program and to promote the program, so that we can get the participation up at thirty percent, and that uh, will be included in the, that is included in the requested budget, will be included in the proposed budget that you and the budget committee will see on the thirty-first. Uh, one of the other things that we did is we mocked up, or our consultants did, we don't take credit for this, they did the work, mocked up a flyer, just to give people an idea that we were going to have a flyer, we're going to do it in two languages. And this was primarily just to give them an idea that, how we would do the outreach, but we got some excellent feedback from the RAC members themselves. They looked at this and gave us some feedback. Uh, you know, for example, why would we request people's social security number? Well, we don't need to. And so although that wasn't the intent of putting this out here, literally was just to mock up and show that we'd have a graphic. Nevertheless, we got this bonus feedback that we were able to um, to incorporate as we moved forward. So that was an unexpected benefit of presenting this information to the rate advisory committee. Now with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jesse Dillon uh, to uh, give her report on the recommendations of the RAC. So Jesse, if you could, please take over.
Of course, no problem. Thank you, Paul. And hello again, President Sanders and committee members. I'm Jesse Dillon, and I'm a Toowleton Valley Water District customer. I pay for water and sewer at my home to Toowleton Valley Water District and um, the sewer entity, I forgot the name of it. Um, I'm also vice president and co-owner of a local property management firm. We manage several apartment communities in the Portland metro. We also build and develop apartment communities. And I joined the rate advisory committee because I was curious and wanted to learn more about Toowleton Valley Water District and the process used to determine rates. I was also eager to share my opinions and offer my advice. So I will kind of talk about the highlights. I think this might be a little bit repetitive from what Paul has presented, but I'll continue forward if I have a couple of minutes. Um, the committee finding and recommendations, after thoughtful consideration, the RAC concluded and recommended that the district keep current temporary emergency assistance program. Um, a new customer assistance program and a program to serve the financially vulnerable customers in need of the long-term assistance of paying their bill. The primary factor determining the assistance is income. The single-family residential customers who qualify for the federal low-income home energy assistance program, LIHEAP, should be eligible. A fixed percentage of qualifying customer bills was the west, best way to equitably serve both large and small households. Um, the program costs should be recovered proportionally from fixed and volume charges. All customers of the district uh, should share in funding right-sized program. All customers of the district uh should share in funding right sized program that is affordable. And the discount provided to qualifying customers should reduce the risk of water shut offs, which is really kind of the goal that the committee had. The district should also work with the community partner to enroll people and to make accessing the assistance as low barrier as possible. Um one of our committee members actually had volunteered the resource of community action. Which seemed like a really great idea. Um and Tuolton Valley Water District should monitor the program utilization and make adjustments to um. To adapt participation. RAC members were also concerned about multifamily residents. But recognize that they don't receive bills directly from Tuolton Valley Water District. And therefore could not receive a bill discount um. So the recommended percent discount program for the customer assistance program, um I'll kind of go over that a little bit. The question is who can qualify, the answer is single family residents um that qualify for low income home energy assistance program. How much assistance would be available? And the answer to that would be twenty percent discount to the customer's water bill. Which would be managed by the board in the future to maintain the program objectives. And the last question is, how is the cap funded? And the answer is proportionally to all customers, it's estimated to be an additional sixteen cents. To the fixed monthly charge for all customers, plus an additional five cents. To the volumetric water rates. The RAC also learned about the district exploring a change to its rate structure to recover more of its cost from fixed charges than it currently does. Which seeks to improve revenue stability. Um to better determine the course of action related to. The RAC members felt that the district should further assess, clearly understand. And be able to clearly explain why the change is needed. We really urged um. Uh everyone to consider a cost of service study. Um we felt that there needed to be a thorough analysis of the data. And we needed to consider the rates and timing of other initiatives and projects. And as well as find ways for changes to the rate structure, not to negatively impact the low water users and the low income customers. And I appreciate everybody's time and effort. Um we did have seventeen committee members that um committed one day per month for. Between August and March to meet and discuss um. All of these topics and we appreciate your time and we appreciate you um listening to this presentation. So thank you.
Thank you, Jesse, and before we go on, I'd like to uh ask uh the commissioners if they have any uh questions uh for Jesse. Before we transition to uh the rest of the presentation.
This is Jim Don, I have an observation, thank you very much. This is incredibly difficult for me to figure out what's going on. And you have basically done all the legwork uh that I can't do. To help us. Significantly. Help. The low income families in the district. Uh you know, it's just uh, it's a need. And I'm so glad. That the committee stepped up. To give us solutions to these problems. And you know. I look forward to doing this again, because I think we're going to have to fine tune this thing as time goes by. Uh but I really appreciate your effort and the forward thinking that you did on this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Don, I appreciate that comment.
And President Sanders, um if uh if it's okay, um Carlos Ramos was one of our uh RAC members. People are getting a little bit of feedback maybe from Carlos, uh if you would like to recognize, and he may have something he would like to add to uh this discussion as well.
Yes, great, thank you.
Good, good afternoon, goo- goo- good evening, sorry for the feedback, I don't know how to correct that.
Uh Carlos, I believe that you are signed into the meeting twice, uh and I think that might be what's causing the feedback.
So what do I need to do?
I will try removing one.
Carlos, I think if you silence the device that you're not using, I think it will be uh silence the speakers on the device that you're not using.
There you go, that should work, now unmute and you should be good to go.
Okay, well, 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 thank you, uh commissioners, Chairman Sanders. I I simply want to let you know that I was a participant uh in the RAC. Uh it was a great experience, a great honor, and I wanted to commend uh all of you, uh the uh not only the staff. Andrea particularly, Paul and Tom and uh some of the other people that put all this together, it was a good experience for me, I'm a consumer. And uh it was both informative and an opportunity to. Understand exactly what a uh rate setting and how to help people, not only low income, but customers in general. So um I simply wanted to commend the uh the commission, uh the uh TVWD staff. And uh everybody that had a part in this, uh I I know that Jesse just did the summary. Uh and I uh was, as other uh RAC members. Vocal about the fact that we needed to do something that would uh be equitable, that would be considerate. And would be helpful uh both to TVW as well as um the customers. So thank you for the opportunity and um I certainly appreciate and enjoyed being part of the RAC. Um I made most of the meetings except for one that I was gone, but um yeah, I was kept informed for everything and uh. Have a very positive experience, so thank you to all.
Thank you, Carla. And uh Jesse, I don't know if you have any further comments that you want to add or are there any other questions for? For Jesse? See, now I will uh presume, but I I I want to echo what Carlos said, it was an excellent experience working with the rate advisory committee. Um we really enjoyed ourselves, and the consultants did as well. Uh it's it's great to be with a group dealing with uh tough issues and seeing them come together and come up with recommendations, it's 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 really exciting. So where do we go with this? Uh what is our implementation plan? This is, yes, I'm sorry, President Sanders.
Before we proceed, uh just wanted to check to see, uh they, there are no meetings left for the advisory committee in terms of uh. Providing information um and making decisions, that's correct?
Yeah, the the rate advisory committee was uh uh was formed for a specific purpose and now its its purposes ended and it's. It's it's last meeting was held and this is the wrap up for for this group.
Okay. It, would it be appropriate to have a celebration event to thank them for their assistance? I know that you provided them food at each of the events. Um would it be reasonable to do, you know, some kind of like uh barbecue truck? Um and you know, have that brought in and then bring these folks back at that usual time and um and just thank them for their effort. Because I've, uh this is a fantastic result and um you know, celebration is always an important component, especially when you have. Citizens who have volunteered their time.
Yes, uh you know, uh President Sanders, why don't we work on that, I I I get uh. Uh Tom shaking his head, we'll figure out something, we'll work with you to to do something to to celebrate this, it was uh, by the way, uh these. This committee now, we have citizens out there have a lot of understanding of TVWD, we don't want to lose. Connection with these folks either, I mean, they're an incredible resource for us to help us on future problems. Uh and as Jesse mentioned just moments ago, we are uh going to undertake a cost of service study as soon as we. Get this Blamette project landed and we have that new cost of serving coming from the Blamette project. And having a rate advisory committee and maybe some alumni were able to come in and um. Help us deal with some of the questions on rate design would be excellent, so anything we can do. To keep these people um interested in helping TVWD. A little bit of uh food and beverage would be a very, very good investment from my perspective. But I, I think I'm speaking, we can come up with a proposal for uh the board's consideration.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that, celebration is important, especially, like you said, you've made nice connection with these people, so. Let's uh codify that and keep it going long term. Sorry to interrupt.
No.
Barbecue, barbecue is a good idea, though.
Um so coming back to the uh customer assistance program structure. Uh you know, we're we're, and I think I've mentioned this to to many of you. Uh the responsible department is customer service department, but they're also responsible for the AMI project, the monthly metering. Uh they're responsible for collection efforts, uh right now that department and normalizing CIS. Um and uh I'm sure Andrew Carlstrom would agree with me right now, their plate is incredibly full, so we're going to have to find a way to help. Work through this because they're the department uh that will own the customer assistance program as our customer service department. Uh they would be responsible for the financial and budget management of the program. And also the management of the partnership, so we do want to partner with an agency like Community Action Washington County. Uh to help qualify customers, variety of reasons, we want to minimize the impact that um this has on the customers. If they have to get assistance, can they get assistance not only for their water, but maybe LIHEAP and some of the other services? That Community Action offers, so we want to have that as well as the promotion of the program. They are our eyes and ears with our customers, the first ones that talk on the phone with customers that need help, and so it's a logical place to. To put that um responsibility, third party administrator, we do want to have a third party administrator that's consistent with what the RAC. Advisory Committee from twenty sixteen seventeen said as well, I mean, to stand up a program internally is extremely expensive and burdensome on the customers. We want to find a way of doing that to reduce the burden so we can drive up that participation rate. As I mentioned, we've had excellent relationship with Community Action of Washington County in the past, uh they were very. Helpful when we were doing ARPA as well as the CARES Act, money came in for the um for the uh COVID nineteen pandemic. They also have been helpful with our customer emergency assistance programs, so we're hoping to work with that relationship. And we think that's in our customers' interest to have that one stop shopping. Transparency, very important that we track and report the utilization of this to the board. So once this program is stood up, our plan is to include information on utilization of the customer assistance. Program in the monthly reviews that you'll have it on a regular monthly basis. Um and the other important part of transparency is that this will be part of our proposed budget. So this will go through the citizen budget process and it'll be appropriate like any other expenditure, so it'll have the oversight. Not just from the Board of Commissioners through the monthly review, but also through the Budget Committee process. We've included in the uh you, you, we don't have a proposed budget yet, and you'd be careful to explain where we are in the budget cycle. We're at the point of requested budget, but when you see the proposed budget as it's revealed to the public and to the um. Entire Budget Committee, uh this will will be included in there. And you will assess the program needs and funding capacity on a bi- biennial basis, so. This will become part of our regular business uh of the district. And we will, management will monitor the needs and apprise the board of any budget budget challenges, if it requires a supplement of budget, if utilization rates go up. Uh or if more customers are qualified than we imagine, or if we need to change that twenty percent, we may bring a proposal back to the board to consider. Alterations over time, so that's the overall structure of the program. Uh what we'd like the board to do after hearing uh the uh presentation tonight from the RAC members. And uh the report that was included in your uh board package draft report. Is we ask that by motion of the board, you accept the recommendation of the twenty twenty two, twenty three rate advisory committee. With that, that's the end of my formal presentation and uh open for questions or hopefully Jesse and um Carla would be available to answer questions as well. Or our consultants that we have online, we do have them as well.
Excellent, so Paul, this is Todd Sanders, I wanted to ask a budget related question because in our last budget meeting. Um it was pointed out that we were putting a fairly significant amount of money into our customer. Um assistance program in this next biennial budget, and I believe the number was two point five?
Over the biennial period, uh so no, it wasn't two point five, it was, it was less than that. Uh so first of all, that's over a two year period, the numbers that we saw here on a monthly are on an annual basis. The other uh and we will bring this to the Budget Committee meeting and we'll have a detail because this one of the questions that was raised. Uh the other thing to keep in mind is we put money in there to stand up the program. Uh because there will be some investment that we need to make uh initially and to promote it. To make sure that we get the um uh customers that need it the most to be able to participate.
Is the uh twelve cents fixed and five cent per volume cost? Um is that basically a replacement values that equal dollar per dollar of what you expect is kind of a burn rate?
Yes, uh so that that was an estimate that uh we're not actually going to add that to the rates. Rather, it'll be treated as a general revenue requirement of the district. Uh so that was put in there so that the uh rate advisor committee could have some tangible sense. Of what the program would cost a a typical customer, so that was the purpose of doing those calculations.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it's a good estimate of what the program. Remote cost.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Duggan? Uh with a great deal of thanks to the RAC members and our excellent consultant team. It is my pleasure to. Motion that we accept the recommendation of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three rate advisory committee.
That was smooth.
Commissioner Fisher and I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan moves and Commissioner Fisher seconds, can I have our district recorder to please provide a rule call vote?
Commissioner Don?
An enthusiastic yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
I agree with Commissioner Don, yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. So fantastic, the motion passes, and again, uh thank you, Jesse, thank you, Carlos. Thank you for coming and talking today, thank you for all your time. And uh we will be putting a bug into Paul and Tom's ear to have some kind of celebration. Um to show our gratitude for, you know, uh your participation um free of charge. Uh in helping us, you know, make a better community in Washington County, we're very grateful. All of us, I think you can sense that we're very grateful, um. This is how governance works, this is how community works, this is how society works. It's when people like you step up and volunteer their time, their knowledge and their service and um it doesn't happen enough and whenever it does. Uh we're just very, very grateful to you, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic, all right, so um one last item on our business agenda this evening, and that is to update. The final financial management policies and updates on our bond sale with Paul Matthews.
Yeah, so uh and I'll go through this fairly quickly, so as as I think you know, we're in the middle of. Of uh preparing a bond for a bond sale, we completed the per- preliminary official statement. You saw that and I just wanted to give you an update of of where we stand on that, and it's preparing this. Want to give you a couple of key details, first of all, we did a competitive sale, we actually met this morning, so some of the presentation material I have here. Is updated from what was sent out because literally this happened this morning uh at uh at eight, eight fifteen in the mornings when we had this. So we did have competitive sale, about seventy three point three million dollars uh of principal that we issued with proceeds. Of eighty two and a half million dollars, so essentially what we did is we sold bonds with a higher. Coupon rate, a five percent when the interest rate is lower, so. The underwriters paid us a little bit more than the par value of the bonds in order to secure them. And then we'll pay that um in higher interest over time, it's a common structure, there are benefits of doing that. So essentially, uh we've issued seventy three point three million dollars bonds, but we get eighty two and a half million dollars coming into the bank. They were issued as parity obligations, meaning that it's at the same level as our WIFIO loan. Meaning that dollar for dollar to come in, it's like having a second mortgage. Meaning that uh dollar-for-dollar come in, it's like having a second mortgage. It's not a second mortgage. It's an augmentation of our first mortgage, which is the, the WIFIL loan. It was done under the um authorization of ordinance zero-one-nineteen, which was a bond ordinance that the uh board passed in twenty nineteen. They gave us six hundred million dollars of bonding capacity to build the wet water supply program and other water system improvements that are necessary. It's taxed then bond with maturity spanning over thirty-year period. What I got on this uh, on the PowerPoint, I don't know how big your screens are to see this, but we found in, in some old, literally coupons, we used to tear them off, take them to the bank, cash them in, and get the money. I interestingly enough, the one that you see from Metzger Water District, which TVWD and Wolf Creek Highway, Merge Creek TVWD, or you know, Metzger, Wolf Creek, Merge Creek TVWD, back in nineteen ninety-three, Mr. Balfour would have to give me the correct date sometime around that time. But anyway, you can see there, the coupon rate was nine-point-six percent. Uh, the coupon rate that we had was five percent. So interest rates, although they're higher now than they were a couple of years ago by historical standards, uh, we are kind of in, in good shape. Key players on the, on this were Municipal Advisor, uh, PFM was Municipal Advisor on that. They provided us with market advice. They helped us structure uh the bond issues themselves, and essentially, they were kind of the coach, the leader of the team to help us pull all this together. Our legal counsel, obviously, our general counsel, Mr. Balfour, helped us with all matters related to the general counsel role. We also had bond counsel, you know, with, which is a specialized legal services that helps us make sure that we're staying on the right side of wrong when it comes to securities issues. Disclosure counsel, which helped write our POS and make sure that that was done correctly, and tax counsel. All three of those services were provided by one law firm. Uh, Hawkins is the law firm that provided those services to us. And then our credit rating agencies. They assess the creditworthiness of the district. Um, and they, of course, do their surveillance and uh look at us on a regular basis. So we had that from Fitch and S and P. Uh, here's the preliminary official statement. You saw a draft of it. It's finalized. Now, this is not a document that is necessarily out there for public uh consumption. Really is oriented towards the investor class. It is the official document that the district provides to disclose information that's relevant to investors. So this is kind of the official word as it relates to this, and this is what people should consider if they are looking at participating in that competitive auction this morning. It will now be updated uh with the pricing that we have. So we've actually gone through the process, and we will have uh pricing, and so it'll become the official statement. I talked about the district's bond ratings, and so we have gone out into bond ratings. Uh, first was from um S and P. Uh, they confirmed or affirmed our double-A-plus rating uh stable, both as an issuer as well as on this particular issue. And Fitch uh similarly gave us a double-A-plus rating. So we're feeling good about that and it, with a stable outlook. Uh, kind of a crosswalk of what that means in terms of credit quality. Here's the three uh more um common rating agencies, SP, Moody's, and Fitch. And so that puts us at um just right below the triple-A, and I oftentimes will say that, you know, um, S and P has um the federal government at double-A-plus. We're at the same credit rating as the, as the federal government, and we can't print money. Uh, it's an old joke. You're probably tired of hearing it, but I, I find it interesting. So I'll update on this morning's sale. Um, just kind of give you the, the highlights. The important number here is what's called the true interest cost, which came in at four-point-two, four, four-point-oh-two, just a little bit over four percent. Uh, now, uh, another number that uh is important is the number right above that, which uh, given the district's financial plan, we are more likely than not to call some of those bonds before their final maturity, especially if they're paying that premium of five percent. So when we do the analysis, we think the actual interest rate that we're paying is supposed to uh, it's under three-and-a-half percent. That arbitrage yield rate, which is calculated for a different purpose, but it provides me the information. I know that if we pay off the debt at the, at the earliest call date, that would be the effective interest rate that we would pay. And that certainly is something, given our uh, the way our financial plan is and the the way the cash flow is gonna work, that we'd be in a position to do that. We probably would. It'll be a game time decision based on interest rates. We won't be silly about that. If we can earn more than than uh five percent on our money, we'll keep earning more than five percent, but that is something that we would be looking at in about twenty thirty-three. Uh, somebody besides me will be looking at it. I'll be in retirement, but there you go. Uh, so our next steps, uh, one, issue a parity certificate. That is, just needs to happen before we close on the debt. It's a very simple process. Um, and we'll be doing that shortly. We'll execute a continued disclosure certificate, which is essentially a contract we have with future bondholders, say that we will continue to disclose information about the district uh, financial information. We'll keep people up to date. That's because this debt can be sold in the secondary market. And if you're thinking about selling or buying our bonds in secondary market, we have an obligation to provide disclosure, so we'll continue that. And we may want to expand that a bit by having the board um, uh, get a little bit of training uh on this matter too, because we want to make sure that we stay on the right side of wrong when it comes to these things. The other closing activities for the bond sale is scheduled for the thirty-first. I shouldn't say scheduled. It is now going to happen on the thirty-first. Um, and um, and we will document our reimbursement amount. So as I mentioned, we're gonna get uh over eighty million dollars of bond proceeds. Some of that will be to reimburse ourselves for money that we've already spent. So that money will immediately return to the district's coffers and be unencumbered. Uh, and we'll want to obviously manage the investment portfolio. Um, as we said, uh, our true interest cost on this is about four percent. We're probably gonna be able to earn five percent. Uh, we need to be careful over time, because there's some arbitrage requirements. We'll manage that well, but uh we will be able to cover the interest cost on this um during the early year. So uh, with that, you know, if there are any questions that you have or discussion, uh, we'll try to provide any answers that we can. And I fully recognize this is the last agenda item, so.
Um, I just would make this observation. Uh, nothing was ever this smooth when I worked for the city of Portland. Uh, you know, this was, this was so smooth. It's like, you know, there weren't any hiccups, which I all, I considered very unusual. But anyway, uh, thank you for you and your team and uh for putting, for assembling consultants that did a good job. And uh, the flakiness factor was very low, I think. So thank you very much, Paul. And Tom.
Thank you.
I don't hear anything else, Paul, but by my math, that's about forty-five days of work that you just covered on that bond, so thank you very much. Um, we need the money. We're burning fast. That's fantastic. Okay, uh, nothing else to be done. We have an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn, just want to remind you, we have an executive session for our board members. And uh, I think Tom and um Clark will be involved. Uh, if you don't mind, let's, uh, Sam, are you with me?
Yep.
Okay, so let's take a short break. Can we do like, say, five minutes if you need to do a bio break? Um, and Sam, can you open up the executive session for the members? And we'll get going on that a little early this evening, if you don't mind? I don't think anybody would mind that. I don't, I'm just making sure I get shaking heads. Uh, Father Lysick was like, yes, little ones want me to return to my duty as being papa. Um, so let's take a quick five-minute bio break. Uh, Sam will open up the executive session, and as soon as you can get in and join us, we will do that. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Appreciate everybody's hard work. Paul, your hard work with the RAC and with the bond. And uh, we'll see everybody over in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.